Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Cape Elizabeth Town Council meeting of August 10, 2015. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, my nation undergoes individual liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. And we would like the roll call by the town clerk, please.
Chairman Ray.
Here.
Counselor Brennan.
Counselor Jordan.
Here.
Counselor McCoslin.
Here.
Counselor Sullivan.
Here.
Counselor Wagner.
Present.
And Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Town Council reports and correspondence. Does everyone have anything they'd like to say? Jessica?
Yep. I really enjoyed the night at the light. It was a wonderful, wonderful evening. I would like to make two corrections, though, and that is it is not a state park. It is Fort Williams Park, owned by the town of Cape Elizabeth, and it is free because that is the wish of the people of the town of Cape Elizabeth.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jim?
I would like to thank the town of Cape Elizabeth and its employees for working with the TD Beach to Beacon Road Race to host another fantastic event. And it was just an amazing day, and I think I'm the only one who ran the race on the Town Council. So I can say from somebody who ran the race, I bettered my time by 12 minutes.
Ooh.
So I'm a happy camper. At my age, that's a good thing. But anyway, I think the town employees deserve an incredible round of applause for what they were able to do again for 18 years straight, put on a really first-class event, and people of Cape Elizabeth should be very proud of it, and I thank them.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Molly?
I have an update for appointments, which I know is on the agenda.
Right.
I don't want to step in if anybody else is in first.
I was just going to- I was going to move to you, but I was waiting to see if anybody else had anything. No? All right then, Molly. Oh, I'm sorry.
I could go after Molly.
Do you want to go now? Because hers is scheduled after.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. I just wanted to report that the Solid Waste and Recycling Long Range Claim Committee is completing its draft of its report and will be submitting it on time at the end of this month.
Great. Thank you very much. Molly, you're up.
Two quick things. The first one is, I could be wrong, but my calendar says today is Jessica's birthday. So, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Jessica.
Oh.
And the second thing I wanted to report in on was the recommendation from the Appointments Committee that we are planning to have a public input session on September 17. It'll be held at the middle school, 7:00 p.m. We've heard from people for, I don't know, as long as I've been on the council, that the council needed to provide some kind of a forum or a better way or a better process of seeking input on the goals for the council work and a better process for disseminating the information about those goals. So our expectation is that on that meeting on September 17, we'll be meeting in the middle school, 7:00 p.m. We'll be looking for your input. We'll try to give a brief update on how the process has worked in the past and how we're anticipating the evening will go, and then we'll probably have some sort of a very brief agenda with some specific topics that we'd like some input on, and then have a broader discussion. I'm imagining, although we have not worked out the logistics yet, I'm imagining that it will be a forum kind of similar to what we used in the library discussions where we set up tables of six or eight or 10 people at each group and had people work together as a team to think about brainstorming and get the ideas back to one central location at the end of the evening, and we will look forward to getting your input and your guidance. And again, I'll just say it, September 17, 7:00 p.m. at the middle school. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Yep.
Then we will move on to the Finance Committee report.
First of all, there is no dashboard, and we're a month into the new fiscal year, so we don't have a whole lot to report, so there's no dashboard. So if you've been looking for it, as I have been, it's not there. You have attached, however, is the July 31, 2015 financial reports. Remember, that's the 27-plus-page I exam, and you're welcome to take a look at that with any questions. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim? No? Okay. Then we will move on to a citizen opportunity for discussion of items not on the agenda. So this is not on the agenda. If you'd like to say something to the council, please come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Paul Seidman. I live at 21 Oakview Drive. I wanted to address the matter of an upcoming discussion on the new Village Green Multiplex project. As I've been looking over documents for the last two years, a critical step has been bypassed, which is clearly defining what the substantial public benefit is for moving forward even with a plan. We had a plan two years ago that was, in terms of the schematic, was basically identical, and it required changing a wetland ordinance, and the public rejected it. We have a new plan, or a resurrected plan, that now requires other law change in order to pass, even though the public would, in terms of what the public has said in the past about what they didn't like about it, that remains to be true. You can use the 2012 FOSP survey to identify that. But another concern is that the language has shifted from 1993 to now, from identifying public interest in a central gathering place to a Village Green and Town Center, to a Village Green Multiplex project next to Town Hall, and now that plus the developer saying, "We need you to change a setback law in order for this project to move forward." And that was his request at a last public planning board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Items not on the agenda? Seeing none, then we will move on to the Town Manager's Monthly-
Kathy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there any way we can get a correction to the statement that was made that the public rejected the wetland issue with the lot next door? I mean, I'd like to have the record corrected because I'm not sure that's correct. Is that possible?
Did you want to?
You know, I don't remember all the details of it. You know, maybe the minutes could reflect that you objected to that statement and that you- are you asking for a report or?
Well, I just think that, I mean, I see that Maureen is here, and I- she's closer to it than all of us, but I think the bottom line here is I'd like to make sure that the record is corrected because I do not believe that the public rejected that wetland issue in the lot next door. And I just, maybe I've lost it, but I don't remember that being a public issue, frankly. I think it was taken out of there either by the developer or in some other fashion. So let the record reflect I disagree with the statement made.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. Town Manager's Monthly Report?
Yes, thank you. I just want to briefly mention that Matt Sturgis, the assessor, has been working on the annual tax commitment, and some of you may have seen stories in some of the other newspapers about other communities ended up getting some additional school subsidy. Cape Elizabeth was no different from those other communities. We ended up getting additional state school subsidy. When the council adopted the budget, one of the paragraphs in the budget was that if there was additional state subsidy, that that would go 100% to the reduction of taxes. So what would otherwise, you know, be taxed? And the taxes that are being committed today, was it today or tomorrow? Do you know?
I think today.
Today. Actually, when the council approved the budget, it was premised there was going to be a 32-cent tax increase. As it turns out, it's going to be 8 cents. And that, you know, 24-cent shift is because of the main legislature adopting a new budget that did provide for additional school funding beyond what everyone did. So the tax, so the bottom line is the tax rate this year, despite the new library and the new debt and all that, is one-half of 1 percent, or 8 cents per thousand. So everyone has the tax bills to look forward to-
Thank you.
-coming out in the next few days.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your assistance.
And is that it?
That's it.
All right. Then we'll move on to the review of the draft minutes for the July 13 meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Jessica?
I second that.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Molly. Discussion. Errors, omissions, changes? No? All in favor? 6-0. Great. Moving on to Item 97, the Ocean House Pizza Liquor License Renewal. I guess I would ask Debra if there are any issues that we should be aware of.
No, as we do, we review each liquor license with codes for our police, and there have been no objections or questions with this renewal for the mulled 10 minus liquor license.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept? Jamie?
Second.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Jim, thank you. Any discussion? No? All in favor? 6-0. Okay. Moving on to Item 98, the recommendation from the firing range committee. Caitlin, would you like to give us a little overview?
Our last meeting, the firing range committee submitted seven findings and four recommendations. Including those recommendations were two recommendations that had to do with the safety evaluation that the town council requested to be done on the Spurwink Rod and Gun Club. At last month's meeting, we set our public hearing to discuss the Swerwink Rod and Guns Club application for next month so that this month we could receive information from that independent safety evaluation evaluator that is going to be here tonight to present to us what his findings were.
Great. Thank you very much. So I will then move on to the presentation by Rick LaRosa, who is here and did the safety evaluation. Mr. LaRosa, if you'd come up to the podium.
Do you want to indicate when the public's going to be out this week?
Yes. Well, I was just about to do that. What I'm suggesting to folks in the room is that Mr. LaRosa is going to give his report. Counselors, write down questions that you have so we're not interrupting the report as he gives it. After he gives his report, we will take public comments, and then we will go to the council questions. Is that all right for the counselors? So we try to keep some flow going. So, Mr. LaRosa, if you would introduce yourself.
Sure, sure, sure.
Tell us a little about your qualifications and what you were asked to do and-
You bet.
-give us your presentation.
Thank you very much. Well, thanks for having me up. Thanks for the great welcome and the weather. It's beautiful up here. My name is Rick LaRosa. I own a company called Our Design Works. We're commercial architects, and I'm licensed in Maine also. We're licensed all across the country. We have products going on all over the country right now. Just by quick way of introduction, I'll just tell you a little bit about myself because I'm a guy from Georgia who, you know, nobody knows, and you're probably wondering who I am and why this all happened. I was born and raised in Omaha, Nebraska. I lived there until 85, 55-years-old. Married my wife there. We met after college in a musical. We were guys and dolls, and I was Sky Masterson and she was Sister Sarah. We're, so anyway, we fell in love on stage, and I sing as a hobby. I've sung for, boy, close to 40 years since I was a high school freshman in a barbershop quartet. We're actually international champs. We won in 1999. And, yeah, so I have a great hobby like that. In Georgia, we live on, so we moved to Georgia. We have two kids. I'm now a grandparent. They just had twins about a year ago, and, well, a boy and a girl. And we have a son who's an FAA air traffic controller in Memphis. We moved to Georgia with an international firm, worked for the Corps of Engineers for a year as an architect, then moved to Georgia, an international firm, Leo Daley opened an office there, and I ran their office with them for about 20 years, ran architects, engineers, interior designers. After that, I went to work for a construction company because we were doing design-build work, and learned the construction side of the business. So kind of learned about what things cost and how contractors make money and all that side. And then in 2004, I opened up our own company. So a little over 11 years ago, we started our design firm, and we were architect-led design-build. So we were actually building projects, a very diverse practice. I'm not lobbying for work up here, but we do all sorts of stuff. Part of that practice, then, became kind of involved a gun company in Atlanta. In Smyrna, Georgia, there's a company called Glock. Glock is an international firm, Austrian, Hershizer and all the gang up there. They have their U.S. headquarters in Atlanta, and we won the contract to work with Glock on the next expansion of their campus. And that expansion involved tactical ranges and manufacturing facilities and corporate offices, and it was a lot of stuff that we had to go to school on. Some of it is like, all right, what are we doing here? How do we, what does that mean? And they talked about confidential work, rifle instead of just their handguns. So it was, so we got to know a lot about Glock, and therefore we got to know a lot about handguns and rifles and gun ranges and police forces. And from that work and that experience, which was extensive, and we're still doing to this day, it's probably got a nine-year history with Glock doing work, from that history, it kind of brought us to other ranges in the southeast. We started getting calls for ranges in Florida and ranges in Georgia and Alabama and such, military ranges, indoor ranges, outdoor ranges, big ranges, small ranges, remediations and new ranges and stuff like that. And, you know, so this is, the economy's kind of tilting a little bit at this point, and we're still kind of going strong because the gun range industry was going, as well as we have got a great client base. That led us to being noticed by the NRA, I guess more than anything. So this, I just want to make sure you know this isn't something that we just went out and became gun center, central. We kind of learned about this and inherited the gun practice, the gun business, as a project type. The NRA noticed that we knew a lot about guns at this point and gun ranges specifically. And just while I said we know a lot about guns, listen, I'm a gun, I'm not a crazy gun guy. I sing. My, my big hobby is astronomy. We have the largest telescope in Georgia and the largest private observatory on top of a hill where we look at Tennessee and North Carolina and Georgia. So I, you know, I own a gun. I like guns, but I didn't come in, I'm an Eagle Scout. My son's an Eagle Scout. I was on the executive board of the Boy Scouts. So lots of, you know, lots of that kind of stuff in my history, but I'm just not like this rah-rah gun guy. So when the NRA called, it was like, okay, well, this is a gun group, right? They're all about guns. So they wanted us to look at their design manual, they wanted us to look at other projects, and from there we started to go more national in terms of our involvement with gun ranges and doing evaluations and such from all the experience that we've had locally in the southeast. So to date, we've probably done 25 evaluations. Some of those have recommendations, some of those just result in improvements, some of those result in relocating ranges. We've probably got 50 gun ranges, indoors, outdoor, tactical, police, military, private, you know. We just finished a range for Research Triangle. It's a total containment range. We just finished a range down in Florida that has a restaurant and a bar attached. So as crazy as that sounds, and it is crazy, sounds crazy, you know, I guess the right thing to think about is, well, that's no different than somebody coming off the street, and they're capable of firing a gun. You got to know that then, too. I mean, so anyway, the guy was an ex-Marine and wanted to do this kind of thing. So qualification-wise, you know, for the past nine years or so, we've been working in the gun industry, in gun range design industry. We have many more products going on now, Colorado, two new ones up here in Maine, Indiana, Pennsylvania, Oregon, California, Nebraska, and we just have, so there's lots of, there's lots of this going on around the country, and it's, it's the concern of, it's my concern as much as anybody's. And believe me, when we wrote the report, if, I'm wondering, but if I'm not covering what you need me to cover, let me know. When we wrote the report and recommended that the range fire be suspended, one of the first calls I got was from the NRA and, you know, saying, hey, you know, we're not in the closing gun range business, right? I said, yeah, I know that, but, you know, I just want to let you know, I'm not beholden to anybody. I mean, this isn't, this isn't, the council did a great job of kind of saying, you know, don't talk to the range, don't talk to us, don't, just go out there and tell us what you see. And I did that, and I did that without the NRA's input and anybody else's. I just said, you know, this is a, this is a situation where I think it calls for us to take a step back. It's in absolutely everybody's interest to have a safe range. I, I mean, I just totally believe that. There's no reason that you would ever want to do anything less than have a safe range. And I think it's in the gun range owner's interest. It's in, it's in your interest, it's in the NRA's interest, it's in my interest, it's in the city's interest, and so everything we can do to make the gun range safe, and if it's not safe, we've got to evaluate if is it safe enough, which, you know, you're talking about ballistics that travel from one and a half to three miles very fast and have deadly force behind them. So when you kind of get to that, you kind of say, you know what, let's take a little time out here, let's make sure things are going right. When we looked at the Spurlink, I hope I'm saying that right, the Spurlink Gun Range, it had residents that had come, right or wrong, after the fact, and they were now in the line of fire, and they were, they're too close. And just to give you a quick sense of angles of elevation here, so I stepped off at the very first of the meeting from that back wall where Chief and Paul are sitting, where that picture's at, to this wall is about 60 feet. Proportionally, that angle of incline, and you can imagine, we're not, we're not designing, we don't want to design a range that if everything's right and the wind's right and everything's real stable and everything's down, that, that the fire is going to go just where you want it to. We design ranges so that if there's an accident, if this one goes like that and then the next one goes like that, that's what you want to do. You want to have that a safe range. So that distance, 60 feet, is equivalent, if you were to take, let's say where Chief's at, so he's sitting down there at the, at the Wayne's Coat, the chair rail height, right? Which is the same height as this back here. The range of incident that's coming from the firing line and elevation, for it to clear the ridge, so to speak, if there weren't trees, I know it's deciduous and there's a lot of lumber and stuff like that, but if you were to clear the ridge, it would be the top of the Cape Elizabeth sign. So that's a, that's a small little margin of error there. You know, if you had a gun there and you were supposed to aim it at the top of the chair rail, if it just ended up pointing to the top of the Cape Elizabeth sign, it would clear the ridge of the hill. And ballistics, you know, as we were looking at for the range there, the ballistics were, at the time, too large. There was a lot of stuff. They were firing all the way from 22s and such up to .7 double-ot nitros. So there was a lot of, there was a lot of power that could have possibly happened there. So we just looked at that and said, you know, this is probably not a good, safe situation. And whether it's never happened in the past or whether it happens tomorrow, nobody wants to be on the side of a report or a range where there's an accident. And I know that there's never happened, they've never had an accident, but you don't want to be there. So we just said, this is the time, and I struggled, you know, I just kind of said, this is the time to write a report and say, we need to, we need to stop fire right now and get a handle on the safety of this range to make sure that everybody understands that. So in a nutshell, that's kind of what we did. So we wrote a report and ran numbers and took pictures and walked and analyzed and went back to our books and looked at the ballistics and looked at the maintenance of the range and stuff like that, and, and recommended that the range be suspended. Now, I know from having done this all across the country that, and I sat over here, but I, somebody said it was like the bride and the groom of which, I have, I have no idea. I don't know whose side I'm on, you know. I'm not anybody's side. I'm on the side of safety. That's all I want. So the point is, though, I guess, that coming into a meeting like this, you know, I'm hero to half and I'm enemy of the other half, right? And as long as it stays like that, then I'm loved and hated by whoever has those opinions and agendas.
Mr. LaRosa, can you speak right into the microphone?
Yes, sorry.
Everybody can hear you?
I just, I'm used to that barbershop stage.
I understand. Understand. And you're, you should address-
Oh, I know.
Thank you.
Anyway, sorry.
And if we could get maybe, maybe an overview of more specifics, just-
Of?
Of the, of the report, some of the more specifics.
If you could go through it as, I mean, if the rest of the council agrees. Chairman Ray.
So anyway, to be more specific on the report-
Thank you.
For a number, for a number of issues on the existing range, I recommended that they suspend fire. I, I do not think there is anything there that can't be corrected. I don't, you know, we design ranges, as do another couple groups around the country, and there's nothing that can't be overcome. We currently are designing a range in Research Triangle, another one, that there is a bioengineering, $40 million land purchase, $180 million building firm coming from Sweden. They want to make sure anything doesn't leave the range. Gunfire should not leave the property, and it certainly should not leave the containment of the range. So between the maintenance, the ballistics, the angles of incident, the topography, all those things, those are the things that we saw in our range report that we said we need to suspend fire. Not to say that they, again, they can't be corrected, they, they will be corrected, shouldn't be corrected, all that kind of stuff, but at this point, I think it's the right recommendation. And we weren't influenced by anybody.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm sure the council will have questions, but I'm going to move-
That's great. Thank you.
I'm going to move to the public comment, and then I'm sure you'll be here for additional questions. So before I move to the public comment, I want to remind people that there's no applause or otherwise expression of approval or disapproval of any statements made or actions taken. So I just want to remind folks of that so we're not hearing some cheering and some excitement and so forth, because it makes it hard for people who might have a differing opinion to speak. So having said that, I'll remind the council that we normally would give 15 minutes, but we may be looking for more, so just so that you're prepared for that. And the same rules apply. Three minutes, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and I'm going to be timing you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tammy Walter. I am, I live at 1095 Sawyer Road, Cape Elizabeth, Maine. I'm the president of the Spurwink Rod and Gun Club. I want to thank the community for your outpouring of support during this difficult time while our range has been suspended for live fire. It is extremely touching to have people not connected to our club or shooting sports offer words of kindness and encouragement. I also want to thank my members for your continued, consistent, passionate support. This setback has only made us stronger. I also want to thank the council and everyone who is here tonight who came out to support us. Our intention is and always has been to have a facility that remains safe and that all of us can be proud of.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, Mark Mayone, past president, Spurwink Rod and Gun Club. Three years ago, we started a modernization program at the club. It has not been without its difficulties. I may not agree with some of the points of the range evaluation, but I do believe that the range evaluation will make us stronger going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. And if there's other people, if you could sort of start to queue up so we're not sort of waiting for you to walk from the very back to the beginning, because there may be others that want to speak.
Hi, Eric Stephanus, to Tiger Lily Lane. I just want to say I think it was extremely refreshing to hear a fact-based analysis from a, you know, professional range evaluator such as Mr. LaRosa, and I want to commend the council for having the foresight to, you know, insist upon the professional evaluation before going, going ahead to review the application. The club has always insisted or assured us that they, that safety was one of their primary concerns, so although I am sympathetic to the fact that they have been suspended, I think they ought to be, as are we, very thankful, once again, that a fact-based analysis has been carried out. I think this gives us all a great deal of comfort. And we can perhaps get away from the constant discussing issues which are not directly related to the, the operation of the club, issues like who was there first and why was Crosshill developed, why did that development go forward, or what is the role of, you know, the club as part of Cape Elizabeth's heritage, even though many of the members are not Cape Elizabeth residents anymore, et cetera, et cetera. Those things could be discussed, you know, ad nauseam. But we can get away from that now, thank heavens, and just look at the facts, what's safe, and I hope you make a, you know, a, a determination on the application based on the facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? No? Okay, well, seeing none then, I will move it along then to councilor's questions. And would you like to have Mr. LaRosa come back up? Mr. LaRosa, could you come back up, so you can answer specific questions of the councilors? Thank you. Uh, I think Jim had his hand up first, Jim?
Um, I don't know whether, um, whether Rick has had a chance to see the recommendations of the firing range committee, but, um, there were two specific, um, recommendations that were made by the firing range committee, who, um, basically wanted you to comment on the design phasing plan, as you understand it, and in particular, as it relates to one-hundred percent shot containment. And I wondered if you have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, first, I have not seen the range committee recommendations, unless they were sent to me, and I do not recognize those, but I don't remember receiving anything from the council or...
I wouldn't expect that you did, I was just curious.
Okay. So, if, you'll probably need to refresh me, as terms of what the question you're looking for, that the design that should be done, would be done, to, or the ones that the club has proposed?
It's the ones that the club has proposed.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so, you know, basically, the club's proposal was, uh, some bin block type walls, and some ballistic rubber attached to that, and, uh, some rubber berming and things, and it did not address fully the need for containment. So, you know, they are, they are needing, as I specified in the report, they are needing to get together with a designer and, uh, and have the, the rest of their plan completed, not only in terms of safety and procedures and, you know, all that kinda stuff, but also the design of the range itself. More baffling, more containment on the sidewalls, better berm, all those kinda things. And, you know, again, it's, it's easy to do, we do this all over the country, but it's, it was not currently in the plan as they presented it.
Okay. And then the second question that we raised was your opinion of the design of the club compared to standards that are used by the NRA?
Uh, same, the same, same answer, basically. The design that, that they were proposing was not as is recommended by the NRA. And it's not how we practice range design right now.
So, that's, that's, uh, is that universally held by the industry? It's not acceptable, or the NRA?
Correct, yeah, I would say the, the plan they have currently would not be acceptable for containment.
Okay. So, the phasing that the club had gone and used up to now, because there's been a lot of money invested over the last several years, as Mark Mayon commented initially, as you look at that investment in relationship to what shot containment should be, were there a lot of dollars being spent, maybe inappropriately, or not well?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that far. I mean, I, I think they're doing lots of things that are needed, as far as the overall gestalt of the plan, um, but they need some bigger elements in terms of overhead containment. A lot of what their plan entailed was side berm and end wall containment. We needed a typical range design, a better range design would have much more overhead containment, trying to eliminate, as you referred to, blue sky, stuff like that, so...
And they shared with you that their goal was to have blue sky done by two thousand seventeen?
Uh, correct, yeah, I think, if, if I could refer to my, the report, the documents that they sent to me indicated a phased approach to, uh, limiting blue sky, but it was much, much slower and longer than I felt was safe at the time.
And the, and the, and the recommendation on eliminating live, um, versus that containment? Containment, and then allow for live?
Correct.
Okay. You have to have containment in order to have...
Correct, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, sorry about that.
In this situation, I think it's best, they don't have, they don't have five miles behind them that's open, and nobody's there, I think they need some containment, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, was it, did you have...
I think Caitlin was first.
Caitlin was first, okay.
Just a question off of what you just said, um, about the no blue sky and the timeline, is it, I guess, and just forgive me for my lack of good words, but is it bad design, or is it too long of a design? Do you get what I mean? Like, if that design that they have for their long-range plan could be implemented quicker, is the design an okay design? Or do they need to totally rethink the whole project?
I think they need to complete the design. It's not, it's not complete. Their design does not have any overhead baffles, it needs overhead baffles. So, no matter how long you would have taken to implement that plan, or how quickly you implement the plan that had been presented to us, it would not have been a successful plan for containment. But, a successful plan for containment can be made, it's just not that plan as it stands, it needs to be added to. They got a good start, but it's not complete.
Jessica, you were next.
Yep. Uh, I think the report is not numbered, but, after, the page after the first graphic, until the steps are begun or implemented, we recommend the city, Cape Elizabeth, request the existing range to discontinue use of any live fire. The reasons are as follows. I'd like you to, if you would, address number two, I think I know what you're talking about, but it has to do with trajectory needed to exit the property, only being five degrees. My, my take on that is that the land and the berms around are not high enough to, if somebody points a weapon, and is that, I presume that's what you're saying?
That is correct, yeah. And referring kind of back to the illustration I used about the walls here, that's kinda what I was trying to illustrate, was that, um, from our calculations, and there was no, um, surveyed result that said, "Here is the elevation of ninety, and here's eighty, and it goes drop down to seventy." We did a lot of analysis, trying to determine what was going on around the neighborhood, and the houses, and distances, and, and from driving it, from satellite imagery, from GIS of the county, from everything we could determine, uh, this, the graphics that's shown in our, in our report on several of the sections we cut, as well as the plan and other diagrams, that's about as accurate as anybody can get it right now. Uh, and I think it's pretty accurate, I don't think we're way off. But what that indicates is that from the elevation of the firing line, which is about, if you were to put it in broad terms, twenty, uh, to the elevation of the top ridge, which is, I could refer to my notes, but it's basically a five-degree angle, you know, five, five-degree, eight-point-six percent, I remember. So, that angle is that distance at any one given time. So, a bullet shot from where Chief is sitting, and just pointed at the top of that thing, would clear sixty, seventy feet of elevation by the time it has traveled, you know, to where the ridge is located, so... That's where that kinda comes in. And once it clears that, and I, you know, you know, the chances of it clearing aren't high, but they are there, so if they're there, let's not take a chance. And once they clear, from there on, the topography drops back down again, so it's not that there's anything else to stop it, once it clears that ridge.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Molly?
I have a couple of quick questions. I've worked with a couple of architects before, so I'm going to ask you probably your very favorite question, which is, having done no work on plans and specifications, can you give me an idea, or give everyone an idea of how long a process the firing range folks would be talking about, and really, your favorite question, what will it cost? Just order of...
Sure, sure, no problem at all. So, uh, you know, to develop a set of plans for, for something, and, and this is a relatively small range, so it's not too complicated, um, I'd say you're probably talking a couple weeks, uh, and that would involve the site planning and the architecture and engineering to support baffles, and, you know, making sure the lines of side are correct and all that kinda stuff, that's something we could do, and, we or another qualified firm could do in a couple of weeks. I'd say the cost of that is probably, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars.
So, my real question was, how about the improvements themselves? Order of improvement, what did it cost?
Um, I'd say you're probably talking about...
Molly's gonna hold you to this number.
Yeah.
I just want you to know that we just built a library.
You don't know what she does.
We just built a library, we know how that works.
Well, and we have so much, I mean, I, my head's rushing with numbers, because we have so many different examples of ranges, tactical ranges, and cowboy chutes, and thousand-yard ranges and stuff. I'm trying to think of a case like this, and you know, and just, uh, put a little bit more caveat on what you're asking me, the, the club currently has a hundred-yard range, hundred-meter range, and a fifty, and a twenty-five, and they're kinda separated into three sections. You know, I think the right way for them to approach this is to try to get the smallest piece of that started, see how that goes, and if that's done successfully, then you can work on the next longer group, and the next longer group, so it's a phaseable kinda thing, and you don't open up any more than, until it's safe, and all that kinda stuff. So, you know, if you just, let's just talk about the twenty-five meter range, just for a second, not, rather than the long ones right now, and then we can do more math. I think you're probably talking about, um, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
And how long would you anticipate it would take to make those improvements?
Um, you're probably talking of, if you got on it, maybe a month.
Okay. And in the longer term, if you were to look at the whole...
Yeah, you could be, you could be talking about, uh, three-quarters to a million dollars.
And that would take...
Could take another six months, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Now, I just, just to add, there are lots of ways to design baffles, um, and lots of communities, police forces, uh, have access to other materials, you know, where we may want to use this, you could also use these other five things, and someone's gonna donate that. So, there's lots of things that affect the price of containment, but that's in a, in a general sense, that's about what I would expect it to cost.
Thank you. And Kathy, can I ask one other question?
Sure.
To, I'm not sure who to ask this question of, perhaps our attorney, or Mike knows the answer to this. The way the ordinance is written, does whatever improvements need to be made, do they need to be made and completed within some specified period of time in order for the club to be fully licensed?
Just, just very briefly, in order for the council to grant a license, there are certain findings that you need to make. And, you know, when you, when you're considering the license application, you'll be reviewing those findings, and, you know, some of the findings are, is that, you know, you're basically finding that it's safe. And, you know, in, in order to have the license and have it operating, the conditions need to be in place to support those findings.
Yeah, so, if those improvements took some period of time to be made, the club would not be operational during that period of time?
You know, you know, I don't want to prejudge the council's decision, because the council needs to make the findings, but, you know, I think if you, if you read the ordinance, you, you, you'll see that you need to make findings amongst other things, that there is shot containment, I know you've gotten a lot of emails on, on, you know, that there needs to be shot containment, but that is language that's specifically in your ordinance that says that you need to find that the shots are contained within the range. You know, you know, you know, whether or not, you know, like, like every other development proposal, you know, you, 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 you know, you, the planning board would approve a development, and then you, you have, you know, you don't have occupancy, you don't have all those other pieces until it's done, you know, you know, that, that's something the town attorney would need to look at, uh, you know, of how that process evolves, but, but, you know, clearly it cannot be operating until you, as the licensing authority, find that the conditions in the ordinance are met.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. LaRosa. I know when Mark Mayon first started discussing this with us years ago, that he did discuss no-blue-sky baffling systems, and that that was part of the planning process for the gun club. So, I just want to make clear that what you're saying is the, there's two things. One, which is, right now, without no-blue-sky in place, that your recommendation is not to allow live-shot resumption. And two, that what you've seen, as far as their future plans, that their designs were not sufficient to accomplish no-blue-sky.
I repeat the first one.
The first one is that, given that there's no blue sky in place...
Correct.
That you would recommend that there be no resumption of live fire until blue sky, no-blue-sky is in place.
Correct, yeah. And I think, yeah, that's, that's what the report says, basically, is that until, until we get containment, we need to cease fire.
And the second point being, that the design plans that you saw the club put forward on blue sky, no-blue-sky, were not sufficient, in your opinion?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, and again, to add, uh, to that, containment can be achieved, and it can be achieved quickly in terms of the design, and I think you're, the, if I now could go back and think about the question there, it was, and that's a licensing thing, and a county attorney thing, I, I, I'm not there, but the idea is, is that if their license is due on the fourteenth, whatever the vote is, by that time, they could present a design, create a design, whether this is useful or not, they could create a design that shows that shot containment can be developed, and they're gonna implement that, and until that time, nothing's gonna happen, until that, that is implemented, and somebody, myself or somebody else says, "That's gonna work," and, um, as soon as that's installed, we look at it, and then somebody looks at it and says, "They're good to go." Just as, I guess, you know, the, the word was ceasefire, was, was adhered to. So, I think there's that potential. Now, whether, that, can it be built by that time? I don't think so. They'd really have to pour to it to get all that done in a month, basically.
Yep.
Yeah. The last question is about calibers of the guns. So, I saw you had charts A and B about handguns and rifles. Were those the guns that are currently at use at the range, or were those just in general?
Uh, those are the guns that they were currently allowing at the range.
Okay. And so, my question is that, are there any caliber of guns that you see being used that would not be appropriate, even with a no, no-blue-sky range?
Yeah, I think some of the, some of the higher-powered guns need to be taken off the list. That's a pretty typical activity at, at ranges these days, is, you know, the seven-double-ot nitros and, and hot, heavier, uh, pieces of, and that would be something that, again, a, a range designer would look at them and say, "Yeah, let's do this for baffling, let's do this, let's do this for containment, let's do this for ballistics," and basically recommend to the club to put limits on what they're doing and how they're doing it, so that it could be contained safely.
Other questions? Caitlin?
Um, to go back to the five degrees, it says that it's not significant enough, I was just curious, what, um, degree is considered significant to...
I'll repeat the first part, your mic isn't quite...
Back to what Jessica was talking about, the, you know, the trajectory and the six, eight-point-six percent being about five degrees, it just says that that's not significant. I was just curious, what is considered significant, just to be in place?
Gotcha. So, it's a, it's more of a, it's, it's, lots of factors coming together, I mean, uh, zero percent is significant if you have ten miles downrange. In this situation, significant would probably be forty-five degrees, uh, or, you know, a hundred feet, you know, versus the, the sixty or seventy they have right now, you need, you need another fifty feet on top of that to start to cut down on fire. But it's a, it's a puzzle of factors, I mean, it's not, it's not just this, it's the fact that there was no baffling, there was nothing over the berm, there's nothing over the, the firing position, and so it's a lot of factors that, that start to say, "That's not enough." If that's all you got, and that things are this close, that's not enough. You start to take out a couple, three of those factors, it starts to become enough, but you've gotta contain it within that.
And then, um, just to follow up, you, um, range design, like, you obviously, your firm does that, how common, I guess, is that to find gun range designers in, in the United States? I mean, you're saying you're working all over the country, so I'm just wondering, you know, is it a common practice, like, is it finding, you know, a needle in the haystack?
Yeah, no, it's not very common. Uh, I'd, I'd say, for the ones I know, there's probably five or six of us that are doing this work. Um, it's, you know, it's, it's probably more of a liability thing than it is...
Yeah. I...
thing than it is design, and it's, it's who wants to take the liability for these kind of things. And, like I say, we didn't, we didn't say, there's a niche that nobody's doing. You know, we started doing this because we were asked, and then we got asked again, and, you know, we consult with our legal team, and, you know, there's lots of, there's lots of language in our contracts when we do designs that is talking about who's reliable for what. The range, like I mentioned, we just did in, the, the newest one we're doing in Raleigh right now, with all this bio, foreign company behind it, of X amount of 100 millions, we are 100% forever liable. And that's a, that's a tall order. So, to take on that order, it is well-designed. So, there, you know, and, and because of that, it's very expensive. So, I think, you know, they have a chance here to contain shot within their, not only their property, but within the range depth, and that's certainly doable. I know how to, I know how to do that. But, it's, it's for them to decide they want to do it, and then get on it, and make that happen. And then, I guess, for council to decide that that's enough, we believe it, it's done in time, and whatever you want to do from there. But that's, that's not my business. I'm just here to tell you about this range, what I saw.
Jim, I think?
In your opening paragraph, you mentioned that if all of this-
You want to know about the quartet, don't you?
No, I don't.
What's going on here?
Not going to go there. Stick around, maybe we can do something.
Maybe later, yeah.
You describe, if, if all things are, are done, that this would be an average gun club. That's the word average. You used the word average.
I think I use it as a present tense.
Yeah, you said, basically-
Not if it was done, but it is currently.
Oh, currently?
Yep.
So, in order for it to be a better than average?
Containment.
Containment.
Yeah.
That's the answer?
That is the answer. Yeah, it really is. They, they're just, most gun ranges right now just have a lot of land, they don't have neighbors, they, they are doing certain things that nobody really needs to worry about, so to speak. But as development comes in, and more people are, you know, gun savvy or interested in guns, and, believe me, I think it's important that, you know, people learn how to handle a gun.
Well, you certainly have confirmed that in your presentation here. During the, during the process of getting to, getting to where we are today, we've heard a lot, and this doesn't make it right, wrong, or indifferent, but, you know, Mark Maion has, has talked more than once, that has gotten some reaction, or a lot of reaction, that if the gun, the gun operator were to use the, the range as designed, then it would be safe. And the issue of containment being the variable here, in terms of being 100% convinced that as designed, or required, and containment, you know, I, I'm glad to hear that, because I think that that has been one of the major disconnects for a lot of us. And I think you've confirmed it for us today, that one doesn't necessarily exist without the other. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other counselor questions? No? And mine were answered while everybody else was asking their great questions, so I won't add to that. Great. Well, then, if nobody needs Mr. LaRosa now, then I will just say thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
And remind people that there is a public hearing on Monday, September 14th, on this issue, so.
Three-minute recess.
And maybe we could take a three-minute recess while I think some people probably want to leave. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much. Guess we gave him just enough time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You get a lobster while you're here? Do you have lobster?
Not yet.
Okay, then, we will continue on with item 99, which is the report of the planning board regarding paper streets. And I see that Peter Curry and Maureen are both here, so maybe Mr. Curry would like to come up and give us an overview? Thank you.
Thank you. This, this will be considerably less exciting than the last, the last topic. We received your instruction on the Paper Street Public Engagement Plan and the role of the planning board in that. We tried, I think, quite hard to deliver on the assignment that you gave us. Basically, what went on, this, I regarded this as sort of a top-down look at the paper street issue. Our staff, and I'd like to compliment the planner on the staff work that was done, it was, it was quite remarkable. We have a spreadsheet of all the current paper streets in town. Excuse me. I believe you have it in your report, looking like this. Indicated are the current status of each street, and what type of activity might either take place on it now, or potentially might take place on it. We also had a aerial photography of each one of the paper streets with an overlay indicating the use, and the typical use might be sewer, water, drainage, footpath, things of this nature. With that in mind, we went right down the list and looked at the current uses to which it was being put, or might be put, and pretty much determined on that basis whether we thought the paper street should remain, should be retained, should remain in place, or be vacated. By far, the recommendation was to retain, because in many, many cases, there appeared to be a useful and logical use to which those streets were being put, or might be put in the future for the benefit of the town. Another one, which is, I suppose, obvious, is where a paper street was keeping a lot from being totally landlocked. And there were a few of those as well. We did recommend removal of a few. We did not expect and did not have a whole lot of public comment on individual paper streets, and we see that as probably happening in the next phase of your three-phase program. We did receive one letter on Thompson Road, and we actually changed our decision based upon the logic of that letter, and actually applying the logic to the entire street, not just the, the parcel of the commentator. So, you have before you, I think, our recommendations. Be happy with Maureen's assistance to answer any specific questions you have.
Thank you. Counselors have questions in reference to this? They're maybe catching up. Why don't, before we take the questions, I'll just ask, because I forgot at the beginning, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to this issue? Sir, were you going to speak to this issue?
George, she wants to know if anyone wanted to speak on this.
Did you want to speak about this issue, sir?
No, I've got the one on, but I was just trying to get a copy of what he's referencing.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Then I-
I'm taking your chair.
Okay, thank you. Then I will go back to the counselors. Questions for Peter and/or Maureen? Jessica, sorry.
I have a comment. I read through this, and I'm pretty familiar with the issue in general, but I just would like to commend the planning board for spending a lot of time looking at every single one of these in a very comprehensive manner. So, thank you.
Okay. Molly?
And I'll reiterate that, and also add the Conservation Commission, because I know they've done a lot of work under this one. Thank you.
Jim?
I, I watched the last meeting where you folks took your final vote and moved it on, and the, the fellow from Edgewood Road that talked to the group, I, minutes have been included in your packet. You had some testimony that you were going to provide to us that might be useful down the road. That was a- Okay, because the, you know, there were people that didn't realize this was happening, and sort of came out at the 11th hour. And as we move to the next phase, we want to make sure that we include that discussion, if we will. And I know that there was some conversation that evening for the first time, actually.
Sure. And I'm happy to provide you with the individual cases of people who've contacted us with questions and thoughts. We did, in a couple of cases, recommend that they go to the neighborhood event, because, and also to put their comments in writing and have them, you know, structured and, and be as persuasive and complete as they can. But we'll certainly give you all the input that we've, we've had.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Other counselor questions, comments? Amy?
Yeah. Hi, Peter. So, see, the vast majority of the recommendations are to retain-
Correct.
-the paper street. And so, if you could just, like, give us just a real brief summary of, like, whether it was a uniform thought process on the ones that you've decided to vacate, or that you're proposing that we vacate, the rationale behind vacating certain ones?
I'm not sure I'd say there was a uniform thought process on the ones we recommended to vacate. There weren't that many of them, and I would say the common thread would be, we couldn't see a good substantial reason to keep the paper street. Maureen, you can probably have a more elegant explanation, but where there was a arguable good reason to keep it, the street, we've recommended retention. Where it just didn't occur to us that there was any good reason to do it, and that there would be no disadvantage to the town or the surrounding community to vacate it, all things being equal, I suppose, we'd say, yeah, let's, let's vacate it, just because it has no reason for being.
And did you only recommend vacating a paper street in the situation where someone requested vacation?
No, I, no, we, I don't think the, somebody's request really had anything to do with it.
Okay. Because I, I just wonder why we, why did it end up vacating something if there was no request, or, I mean?
Well, if, if you look at the current status column in the spreadsheet, you'll, you'll see the, the ones where we talked about vacating, usually the, the, well, U-21 dash one, Dearborn South Road, there was basically nothing to report on current status, so the recommendation was vacate. There were, there seemed to be no substantial reason to keep the paper street. And sometimes, the reason to keep it was, was pretty obvious. And sometimes, it was a little bit more theoretical, but you could see sometimes there, there might be a connection to a walking, a hiking trail, something like that, where it would be a little bit more tenuous, but still, you know, it, it had some substance to it. If there was no identifiable reason to keep the paper street, then vacating just seemed to make sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Then, can I entertain a motion that the town council acknowledge receipt of the report, thank the board for its considerable work, and refer the recommendations to a town council workshop to be scheduled?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Molly?
I'll second that. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other questions, comments? All in favor? Six to zero. Okay, then we'll move on to miscellaneous technical amendments review request, and I might ask Cor Peter and maybe Maureen to come back, for the miscellaneous technical amendments review request. You want to do that, Maureen? Okay, great. Thanks. Yes, sir, did you want to speak on this issue?
I just was wondering when the next, when this paper street was next, you know, we'll see your date.
It'll go to a workshop, but we don't have the date yet.
Okay, so I mean, you-
When you, when we get a date, just keep checking the website, because once we have a date for that workshop, it'll go right on the website. ThecapeElizabeth.com?
Yeah, well, like, do I have to check the date?
No.
No, no.
Go ahead. Yeah.
The earliest possible date, it would be September 10th, but the council has four topics already scheduled for that evening, and after early, a discussion this evening, there might, may be a fifth one, so that one might slide off, we don't know.
Okay, thanks. I just-
Yeah, sure. Good question. Maureen?
Okay. So, you know, you're pretty familiar that you've been getting a lot of ordinance amendments lately, and I'd like to suggest we might have one that's a bit of a sleeper. The technical amendments is a recommendation from the planning board to just do a cleanup package of amendments. It's not intended to implement the comprehensive plan, it's not intended to make major policy changes, it's basically intended to clarify existing provisions, and I, I will invoke protect the public health, safety, and welfare provisions, and also just to improve our customer service by making our existing regulations clearer. So, we've made a list here of, you know, what happens is, as staff implements the ordinance, people come in with projects, we apply the ordinance, so we kind of go, oh, that's kind of a problem. And we keep a running list. And we do these technical amendments packages every once in a while, and the suggestion is to authorize the planning board to do another one. We've given you a list here of what we've come up with so far. Frankly, since we did the list, I have two more items. So, we are asking that you authorize the planning board to go ahead and do some work on this, not limit them to just what's on this list. And in fact, if you have other thoughts, feel free to throw those in their direction as well. Questions?
Some questions? Okay. Then, does somebody want to make a motion to authorize the planning board to do various ordinance technical amendments? Molly?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Jessica?
I second.
And questions, comments? No? Okay, all in favor? Great. Thank you very much, Maureen.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 101, which is the Eastman Meadows Affordable Housing Units Recommendation. And Mike, I believe, is going to address that?
Yeah, I'll introduce it. If it gets too technical, we may have to revert to Maureen. Back in the early 1990s, the town council had an affordable housing committee, and they looked at different ways of providing- they looked at different ways of providing affordable housing. And it was the desire of the council then, and it was enacted into an ordinance, that in essence, as new developments were proposed, there would try to be a set aside of so many affordable housing units, depending on the size of the development, and also dependent on whether or not there would be low-income housing units or moderate-income housing units. It's like anything, you know, it's worked somewhat well, but it's also had its problems. For example, the old Leighton Farm on Wells Road is one of these units. There's a couple of them in Cross Hill. Well, it can't, you know, within the ordinance, there's a provision that the developer can attempt to sell these things and, you know, to utilize the affordable housing provision and to market it, to show example of marketing, but that it comes a point that after it's put on the market so long, and there aren't any takers, the ordinance has the provision that the developer can do an affidavit and said he's done this, so he's done that, and come back to the town and say, you know, I just can't sell these, I want to offer them to the town to buy them, which is the town's right. There's a provision, and there's a proposed draft amendment that our special counsel for affordable housing, Maurice Sito Selinger, came up with that basically, you know, the developer, in this case, Eastman Meadows LLC, I think it's called, you know, has said, you know, they've tried to sell it, they can't market it. So what the option is, is you say no, but that may not be keeping with the ordinance, but you might -- there might be some other option that you could think of. Or, under the ordinance, you authorize us to sign this waiver, we do that, and then the two units that are involved here could then be sold to non-qualified buyers at market rates with any excess over, believe it or not, these are affordable at $395,022, which is, I just can't believe that. And that might be one of the problems. I think if people are going to spend that money, they don't want to have all these strings attached. But anyway, so if this would allow the developer to sell them at market rates, and under the ordinance, any excess over the amount that they'd be able to sell for, which is $395,022, be -- go into some fund for affordable housing, be set aside for that. I do, you know, we'd put it into a fund, we don't have any specific proposed use for those monies, but, you know, but conceivably, you know, this could be, you know, in, you know, $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 each, that these, based on what these other units are selling for, that would go into a fund. So my recommendation is that you do waive the town's rights to purchase two affordable housing units that have remained unsold for some time, and otherwise, and within that, operationalize the provisions that are in the current ordinance. The other piece is, in your previous item with technical amendments, this is one issue that's going to be looked at, needs to be looked at, is how are the technicalities of this ordinance working, and do there need to be changes in order to make it have the intended effect of providing additional affordable housing units in town?
Right. Questions for Mike? Yes, Molly?
I have a quick question. How did that figure -- how did we arrive at that number of $395,022? And how did anyone find that as affordable?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's determined by -- go ahead, Maureen. Basically, it's determined by ordinance as a percentage of average, and she'll -- she knows the details better than I do.
So it's, the provisions you have, I just want to say, the affordable housing provisions Capelith with has are the envy of many other communities, so you should be proud of your ordinance, but it might need a little tune-up. So the number comes from, in the ordinance, we do not put an exact dollar amount, because obviously, within a year or two, it's out of date. We have a definition that says moderate income is affordable to families within 80% to 150% of the median income for the Portland area. And then we lean heavily on the Maine State Housing Authority, who actually cranks the numbers for us. So they give us a low-income number, and they give us a moderate-income number, both income and affordable home, and that's what we provide to sellers of affordable housing for them to sell the homes at.
Yes.
So that number would be the same if the developer were selling a unit in Scarborough or South Portland or Portland, New York or Yarmouth?
It really depends, it actually depends on what their definition is. Some communities base their definition on the median income for the community. At the time, in 1992, when Cape Elizabeth adopted this, they felt that they had already done a report that said you had an affordable housing problem, and to tie your income to Cape Elizabeth didn't really get at the problem. So your definition says, to the Portland Metropolitan Statistical Area, anyone who uses that as a reference is going to have the same number.
That seems very high, Tim.
Well, and I agree with you. And in '92, when this was written, the state had some guidelines for affordable housing, and they said, they had originally said moderate income was between 80 and 120. And the values in southern Maine were so robust that they actually allowed communities to define it as 80 to 150. And it was in that period of time that Cape Elizabeth adopted the ordinance. Since that time, I really think we need to look at that 80 to 120 again. And it may be that just changing that definition to 120 instead of 150 could make the moderate income hit a market that we're not hitting, because right now, the moderate income is really bumping up against the market rate, which isn't really dealing with the original intent of the ordinance.
And I'm sorry, Mike, did you just say that this would be considered under the technical amendments, or that it could be added to that? Or, yes?
Will be.
Thank you. Thanks.
Other questions for Maureen? Okay. Then I would ask for a recommendation or a motion to waive the town's right to purchase the two affordable housing units at Eastman Meadows, so they can be sold to non-qualified buyers at market rates, and then anything in excess of $395,022 will be provided to the town for other affordable housing. Jessica?
I saw moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jamie. Any discussion? All in favor? Great. Okay. Item 102, demolition of bleachers at Fort Williams Park. Do you think maybe Mike was going to start with this?
Yeah, just at your workshop last month sometime, I don't remember the exact date, you received a report on a proposed amphitheater which would go, I call it behind home plate on the parade ground. And, you know, when the council heard that, they looked at it, you know, thought it was an interesting proposal. They asked that, you know, could it possibly be done in phases, to demolish the bleachers first, and to, you know, look at the amphitheater when more monies are available in the Fort Williams capital account? So anyway, it was, the consensus was, go back to the consultant and find out, you know, how much it would cost to just take out the bleachers now, and to also ask the Fort Williams Advisory Commission to look at it. As the notes indicated, the Fort Williams Advisory Commission did that. They submitted a recommendation. Lee Pratt is here, could discuss, the chairman of the committee could discuss the recommendation. But anyway, the cost, the cost to simply remove the bleachers came back. This is an estimate, budgetary estimate, at $120,000. We also had, you know, sent an email, or there was communication with the high school principal and others, indicating that this might have some impact on graduation. And, you know, knowing that that concern was out there, through Bob, we went back to John Mitchell, the Lansky Park的设计 consultant, and asked, you know, what if we kept that section where graduation is, the lower bleachers, and took out the rest of it? And John, I expected more of report, we got a couple of sentences, which we distributed the fort committee and to the council, I think, on Friday, he was thirsty. And basically, that said it'd be $15,000 less than the 120, so that's an outline of where this stands.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Lee, did you want to add anything to that?
You know, I have prepared remarks, but Mike has pretty much covered it, so I don't want to take up time if it's unnecessary.
Okay.
Certainly, if you have questions.
All right. Then I'll throw it back to the council. Questions, comments? Yes, Jessica?
If we left those bleachers in that section in, and it would reduce the cost by $120,000, do we know what it would cost to take those out at a later date if we decided to?
Do we know what it would take? You know, I wondered the same question. You mean, if we saved the $15,000?
Right. Is it going to cost us $50,000?
My sense is, is that it's probably, you know, on the one thing, you're restaging it at a different time, but on the other hand, you're dealing with a much more manageable piece, and, you know, I don't know if it's something that we could do, you know, at a much lesser expense. I don't know that. I bet, you know, I really don't know. My sense is, it's probably six of one, half dozen of another. But, you know, what we're left there is a lot more easy to deal with than taking out, you know, the big rise and the rest of the bleachers. You know, if we did our own trucking, you know, which is easily doable with, you know, the smaller bleachers, which, you know, would be real difficult to do with the whole mass of them, so, you know, it's, I don't think there'd be a substantial cost savings or increase by keeping those bleachers, other than the $15,000, you know, immediate savings.
Caitlin?
Maybe, Lee, or if anybody else can refresh my memory, what was the cost going to be for the amphitheater? And has any look been into, like, similar to the question of will the $15,000 go up, the doing them at the projects at the same time? Is there any cost savings in taking the bleachers out and putting the amphitheater in at the same time, or is it two completely separate projects and there's no way to save any money?
I wish I had more specific information about that, because we have not done, you know, haven't worked those numbers specifically. The original number, now I don't have my notes with me, but it was close to half a million dollars for the entire proposed project that included the demolition and the construction and some of the amenities that we were talking about. I think that in separating the demolition from the construction, my assumption always was, and we got confirmation from John Mitchell while we were deliberating months ago, that if it was phased, there would be overall an added cost. But what that difference is was never specified. I think in this case, because we won't be revisiting the same area and undoing anything that was done, it, there probably isn't a terrible overlap of labor, but it always costs more to mobilize twice as opposed to once. I don't know if Bob has anything more to add to that. I hope that answers your question. I just want to, I guess, add, now that I'm up here at the podium, that the message I received from you all at the workshop was that you wanted to take care of, address, eliminate the safety issues that were present with the deterioration of the existing bleachers, and that you had concerns about the liability that would remain with the town if it wasn't addressed while we continued to work on this project, which looked now to be a year or two out in the future, given the planning process and the budgeting process, planning board review, et cetera. So I just, I just want to remind you that if you do choose to keep this piece of the bleacher there, that the liability and safety issue has not been completely eliminated. There'll be some there. Of course, that's your judgment. We have not met as a group since we approved this recommendation, which is to eliminate all the bleachers. So I have no response from my group in terms of this other option, but I guess for the purposes of tonight, our recommendation stands as presented.
I have a follow-up question.
Yep.
Was there any other discussion about the safety and the liability, other than demolishing, demoing the tire bleachers? I mean, was there any workshops or brainstorms onto other ideas on how to repurpose them, make them safer without demolishing? I'm just thinking, we can't just order the demo without, I imagine, having a public hearing and listening to the public on what their thoughts are on getting rid of these, you know, these bleachers that have been there, you know, forever. So I'm just wondering, what we can say back to them was, here was five options discussed, and, you know, was there any other thoughts onto how to improve safety or eliminate liability?
Just if I might, you know, we've had Fort Williams Advisory Commissions for a long time, and they've recommended several times that we do repairs for them, and I don't know if you've been down there lately, but it's, they only last so long. It's, you know, particularly, not so much the smaller bleachers, but the larger bleachers are really falling apart. And, you know, it's, I think, you know, the community, you know, needs, you know, you want to more invest in something that has huge elevation issues and will continue to do that. You want to, you know, if you want to reinvest in those bleachers, you know, you can do that. I've just never, in recent years, you know, when people have actually looked at them, seen support for throwing more money at those existing bleachers.
I was asking if the Fort Williams Advisory...
There was a study that was done in 2009, I want to say, by Renner, and anyway, there is a study. And even then, the recommendation was not to try to repair or rehabilitate the bleachers, that it was a losing battle. And I will be, I'm, I, yes, I know that we've worked on this bleacher project for a year now as a group and have considered four different plans. None of them have included salvaging, repairing, keeping any of the current bleachers. Every one of them has, without discussion, I might add, I mean, I don't remember any debate about it, all of those plans have included the total demolition and removal of the existing bleachers.
Any questions? Molly?
I have a quick question on the consideration of leaving some part of the bleachers for graduation. Is there a possibility of leaving a different section of the bleachers that is in better shape or less expensive to keep?
Bob can address that, because I had nothing to do with the option.
Okay.
The section on the easterly end or the berry end towards the parade field parking lot, those are about the best shade.
That's the section closest to the water, where they hold graduation.
Exactly. Looking at the bleachers from the baseball diamond, the parade field, the section to the right, those are in the best shade.
Okay. They're in the best shape, and that's what's proposed to be kept?
That's an option for you to consider.
Right. Okay. So the issue, as I understand it, on safety has to do not so much with whether the bleachers are deteriorating, which I think you've just spoken to, the fact that that's been taken care of periodically over the years, but there are also issues with differences in elevation heights or how they're structured, maybe?
There's really, there's loose concrete. Some of the risers, actually, they're spalling or falling or cracking off. So if you look at the, sort of, the middle of the bleachers there, there's sections that have just, the face of them has fallen off. So if you walk on them, there's loose concrete in several of the sections. So if someone was walking up and down, it's not really the height of the risers, it's really the composition of the concrete, which I think was made from, they said was made from beach sand. It really isn't concrete like we know it today.
Right.
So it's very brittle.
You know, the height, if I might, the height of the risers has been there forever. But if you look at, you know, modern construction standards, you're not going to do a riser that has that much of a step. And in some places, there is that much of a step. It's very uneven, but, you know, that problem's been, in essence, the day they were built.
Caitlin?
And the demolition of the bleachers and any projects, I guess, and anything after, you know, the grassing, the grading, that's not going to, I guess, take any steps backwards from any forward momentum with any amphitheaters or whatever else gets decided to be done over there? Is that correct?
That's to my knowledge. It's just really to stabilize the slope to what we call a four-to-one or a slope that could be maintained. Some fill would be put over it, but it wouldn't have an impact on anything done in the future as far as any conceptual designs.
Other question? Molly?
Sorry to come back to this question again. So if we keep the section to the far right, most easterly section, where they hold graduation, and we save $15,000 on the total demolition, do we then still need to... do we then still need to put some money into those bleachers to repair them?
There's a couple of bad sections on either end of that section. Depending on the timeframe of the new plan and implementation, we might want to think about doing some very cursory repairs, possibly, but-
Not in the fifteen thousand dollar range?
No. But it's just a choice. We'd have to look at that to see.
And railings?
Well, yes. And then there's a railing that, once you've decided to leave that section, there's a railing that would be needed on the westerly end of it. There's a railing that's currently there. It may or may not be able to be reused. We don't know that.
Just if I, there's probably about a five-foot, six-foot section that you might want to reform and put some concrete. It's not going to last too long, you know, and, you know, you're talking maybe a thou, I don't think you're talking a thousand dollars. You're talking a lot less than that. But, you know, if you're going to keep these smaller bleachers, there are some, particularly for graduation, there are some minor repairs that ought to be done before you put a hundred of capelusbus, tiny young people on there.
I agree.
So what we're doing, I mean, what I'm looking for from the council is a decision of which way you want to go. So, you know, a motion to remove all of them or remove some of them or whatever your heart desires, so.
Are we doing the budgetary allocation again?
These monies would come out of the Fort Williams Capital Fund. And you had, during the budget session, you had discussed that, you know, once there was some more, look at this, that you'd revisit those monies. There's plenty of money in the Fort Williams Capital Fund to do this. They had originally proposed for the bleachers this year, a couple hundred thousand, was it? Two fifty? Yeah. So, you know, that was considerably reduced during the budget process. There are funds in the Fort Williams Capital Fund should you wish to do this.
Caitlin, you have a question?
Oh, I was just curious, the timeline, sorry to keep asking questions, the timeline of if we decided this tonight versus in a month from now, do we lose any momentum? Do we lose any foothold in getting the project accomplished?
That's a good question for you.
I don't think so. The idea was when contractors were looking for winter work, this might be a good project that might be lucrative for them. And so the work involves, you know, crushing and demolition. But I don't think we're going to lose any ground if it's thirty days from now you make your decision. It would be something that would be programmed this winter.
Are you looking for additional information? Is that why you're asking?
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking that based on what I saw on the agenda, I would be inclined to think that most of the public did not think we would be making this decision tonight. And I'd be interested more to hear from the public, just, you know, considering we've been discussing open process, you know, the last few weeks. That's all I was saying.
So we'll go back to the council. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Chairman, I have another question.
Yes, yeah.
This is actually for the town manager.
Yep.
I don't remember the communication from the school department. Would you please, do you just remind us what that, what their position was? I mean-
It wasn't from the school department. There was a response from Jeff Shedd. And he was informed that this would probably, if it was demolished, that you'd have to find other alternatives in order to deal with graduation. And he basically responded that he wasn't very happy with not having graduation there, that it was a thing that people, you know, liked to have.
Well, it hasn't been going on forever. I mean, my son graduated right next to the high school in chairs. I mean, they don't, they haven't, this hasn't been a twenty-five-year thing.
It's probably been fifteen or twenty years the graduation's been there.
And so if there weren't bleachers, they certainly could put chairs out there, could they not?
Well, there were lots of other options. You could move in temporary bleachers. There could be, you know, but repairing those bleachers, you know, at, you know, five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, to have them there for a couple of years would be less expensive than some of the other alternatives, you know, if they want to have the event in Fort Williams Park.
Amy?
So was the, maybe for Bob, was the estimate internally done or was it an outside person that came up with the estimate?
John Mitchell, the consultant, the committee prepared that scope.
So I'm, my guess is that it was based on the amount of, you know, crushing and it's probably a cubic foot measurement, that sort of stuff estimate. So it probably would be the same cost of that, you know, on a per cubic foot basis down the road. So I understand that's a concern, but I think it probably won't be much of a difference.
I mean, there could be some additional mobilization, depending on, we leave the means and methods to the contractor, whether they bring in a crusher or they demolish on site and truck it away. So it really depends on how the contractor would approach it, given, you know, how much extra that would be. But there'd be another mobilization to perform that task. We don't know what that amount would be. Probably wouldn't be much.
Does the will of the council have any ideas? I'm just too tired to think anymore.
I don't have a problem. Caitlin suggested that if it's not pressing, that there's going to be any more public feedback for the next month if it presses that.
You know, I do caution the council at the September meeting, you have another item on the agenda that will take hours. So, yeah.
We never have that.
Well, we could receive, we would get the word out there that this isn't actual, you know, we're making this decision one way or the other. I just, I don't think it was clear to most of the public that, you know, this decision was yes or no tonight. So I would just be curious to see what we get in the next month for emails, communications, you know, corn purchases.
What?
People who stop by the farm just to talk to me. They always buy a green bean or something, just so they can-
Well, then, does anybody want to make a motion this evening or Jessica?
Well, I don't see this as an issue that requires waiting. I mean, it's been on the agenda. I don't, I mean, I don't agree with Councilor Jordan. I don't think we need to wait for public input or comment. I just don't see this as particularly controversial or expensive or any.
So are you make, I'm sorry, just a second. Jessica, are you making a motion?
Sure. I move that we-
Before you do that-
I'm sorry.
Jim?
Since the-
I mean, Jessica does have the floor. Is it all right for him?
I give the floor to councilwoman.
Okay. So based on what Michael just explained about Jeff Shedd's response, the advisory commission hadn't taken a position on that last section that was just presented to you tonight. However, the advisory commission has had conversation about how important this site is to our graduation and the traditions that have been established. So while they don't have a vote to either support or otherwise that recommendation, it has been discussed and it is an important piece of all their deliberations because they're very concerned about the tradition that has existed there and want to continue with it. So I'd just add that as another piece for considering the one section and possibly modifying it. But again, I understand the whole issue of public process and input and having it out on the airwaves so people can talk about it. But at the same token, you know, we have been deliberating, as Michael indicated, for years on the disposition of these bleachers, so.
Then back to Jessica. You've had a motion, I think.
I move that we accept the town manager's recommendation to, am I saying this correctly? To demolish most of the bleachers, but retain the section that is used for high school graduation.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Additional discussion?
I'll ask if Caitlin wants to move to table Jessica's motion, but-
I'm sorry. Caitlin?
Thank you, Jamie. Yes, I'll move to table Jessica's motion to the next meeting.
Can I have a clarification on what that means? I'm too new to the council. I don't understand what just transpired.
Do you want, please?
Yeah, you know, if a motion is made to table, it's not debatable. And it effectively kills the proposal. If the, if the motion is to table to a date certain, that's a possibility. And, you know, I didn't, I didn't have that as part of the proposed motion.
So is the tabling something we vote on?
Did she? I didn't hear that.
She said to the next meeting.
Should we vote on whether it's tabled or?
If there's a second, so the next question is, is there a second to the table?
That's second.
Jamie, thank you. Okay. So this is not debatable. All in favor of tabling? All opposed? Okay. We'll go back to the original motion, do we not? Or do we?
Yeah, that's what's on the table.
Okay. So we're back to the motion that Jessica made and Molly seconded, which is to demolish everything except for the graduation bleachers that we understand is about a discount of fifteen thousand on the one hundred and twenty thousand dollar cost. That can be discussed. Discussion. Molly?
I'd just like to add to that, that we need to be sure the bleachers do need to be repaired in that section that's being held on to, that that happens.
I think you-
If the plan is to keep that, we'll look at some temporary repairs. Because, you know, my guess is they would still be in place for a couple more years.
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah.
Is there a plan for the softball field bleachers? Are we going to be looking at installing temporary bleachers for people to continue to use the softball field? I know a lot of parents use the bleachers, whether they're unsafe or not. So I'm just wondering what the continued policy will be for use of that field.
You know, I would, you know, I think that's going to be an issue the Fort Williams Advisory Commission will deal with. But, you know, I have not heard any discussion of the town providing temporary bleachers.
Other questions? So all in favor of the motion to demolish except for the graduation ones? All opposed? Six-zero. All right. We made it through that one. There we go. Okay. Thank you. Then moving on to item 103.
Does that release, does that include the funds for it?
Yeah.
Yes. I assume you're getting it for a reason, Jamie?
Because this violates, right?
Right, right. And do we have to vote to agree? Jamie Wagner is going to recuse himself, wishes to. Does the, so is the council in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we're looking at the proposed lease agreement of space at Office Building at the front of the community center. Is there a motion? Caitlin?
I move to approve the lease agreement.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Molly? Discussion? Jim?
Do we have, do we have all the information on this particular property? Rent stream, is it current, all those? Do we have, do we have that information?
Michael?
What are you asking?
Well, is this, is this, is this tenant current?
No.
They're not current? Okay. So do we, do we authorize a lease under those circumstances or how does it work?
Well, that's up to the council. Our lease, our different leases provide that payments are due on the first of the month. In the case of this particular, the lease that was expiring, the July rent payment has not been made nor the August.
Okay. Go ahead.
What's our policy? What's the town's policy in such cases?
Well, the policy is stated in the lease agreement that the rents are due for a certain time. The practice is that when rents are past due, the facilities manager contacts, or someone from his office, I don't know if he does it or someone else does, generally will contact the person who's, you know, who's the leaseholder to say, you know, you owe us the money, get it to us.
Sorry. The chair was flipped. That's all right. Caitlin?
Has that happened or could we ask the tenant why he might be?
You know, in this instance, it's happened a number of times over the last couple of years, yes. That calls have been made or emails sent, I'm not sure, the method of communication. There's been, you know, a number of times that the lease, that the rent over the last two years in particular has been two to three months late. It's generally, you know, I don't know if there's been a month in the last year that the rent has been paid on time. There might be one. It's generally paid two or three months at a time.
Jim?
Well, can I move to table this to our next meeting for more information or?
I'll give you the information.
Okay. Just.
What's the desire of the council?
Well, I guess the second to table motion.
Right. I realize that. Jim made a table motion. Is there a second for that? Jessica?
I'll second.
All right. Then we would vote on the table, maybe to gather more information and come back next month. So am I correct that we vote on the table?
Not debated.
Not, pardon?
Not debated.
Right. So all in favor of tabling the motion? Opposed? Okay. We'll table it till next month and we will gather more information and come back for that.
Can I speak to that issue?
No, I don't think we can.
Now that we've moved on or not to the tabling issue. It's a question about the lease, if people read the lease and what the default provisions are. That the, in an event of a default made by tenant and the payment rent overdue, the tenant shall have fifteen days after receipt of written notice to cure. In an event of a default made by tenant, any of the other covenants, et cetera, et cetera. So I do appreciate that I'm just voting in favor of tabling because I do think it's worth having a little discussion at some point. But people, I do want to point out that technically, we think the tenant is not going to default until that date expires.
Michael?
Yeah, just on that point, a few months ago, I'm not sure, there was discussion, and I'm not sure if a default notice was sent, not for the current period. But, you know, early there was one and the default was corrected. You know, I think, you know, the real point at this point is, you know, do you wish to renew the lease? It's, you know, and this also does involve a little bit more space than the previous lease. So, you know, I would have to consult with an attorney to look at those particular issues.
I think that's probably worth having some info for us for the next meeting so we understand the implications.
Right. And we've tabled it so we can gather some additional information before next meeting, so.
You know, I will say this, you know, I've tried to, because of the awkwardness of this, I've tried to have someone deal with it who's not me. You know, when you have someone who's, you know, a leaseholder, who's also one of your seven bosses, it's awkward. So Greg has generally handled the details on this, as he does for all the other leases.
I think that's very reasonable and very well done.
I will ask, I will just move that we are going to look at, there's citizen opportunity again for discussions, not on the agenda, and there's nobody here. So before we go into the poverty abatement request, I will just say publicly that we're not going to come back into public session, are we?
Yes, you are.
We are because we have to vote on that, but there will be no additional business.
It won't be televised.
It will not be televised. Okay. Great. So-
And the only item will be the vote on the poverty abatement?
Right. Okay. So we'll move on to item 104. And does somebody want to make a motion with the right citations? Jessica?
I move that we enter executive session in conformance with 1 MRSA Section 405-6F to review a request for poverty, for a poverty abatement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Molly. Any discussion? All in favor?
No one's recusing themselves.
I have to recuse myself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Personal friends, neighbors will be the person requesting the abatement.
Okay. So does any, the council's okay with his recusal? Yes? Okay. Great. Then we will go to the Jordan Conference Room and we- Great, then we will go to the Jordan Conference Room and we will get through this item.
I can't vote on it, so.
Yeah, but he can't vote.
No, he can't, no.
He's done. He gets to leave, yes.